Okay. Good evening, everyone. The March 16th, 2020 meeting of the Anorundal County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. During this extraordinary time, may we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us. May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities. Let us listen to one another and support one another. Let us remember to have patience and display kindness and compassion in all of our actions. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to hear from, we're going to get a COVID-19 update from Dr. Kaliana Rahm. If you'll come to the, Madam Secretary, to the table or to the podium?
I believe Dr. M. M. will be at the table when I need him.
Oh, and Mr. Power, excuse me.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Hi, Chris Trummer from the County Exec's Office. We are going to have Dr. Kaliana Rahm present, and you'll have an opportunity to make, to ask him questions. And after that, we'd like to have Mr. Power give a general government operations update. You can ask him questions, and then I will actually have a little bit of a closing message at that time, too. And that's why I'm here in the unusual circumstance of not wearing a necktie before you, because I was not expecting to come to council tonight. But, thank you. With that, we'll turn over to Dr. Kaliana Rahm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to, I think about a week ago now, last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to speak to you about, about COVID-19, what it is, what, why it is that we care about it. And so, I'm not going to go over that. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer those. I really want to talk to you about what are the interventions that are being taken, why they're being taken, and what we expect to see over the coming weeks and months, potentially. So, one of the, one of the, I think, key points about COVID-19 is that there is no treatment and there is no vaccine, which means that we have very limited arsenal of tools to be able to use to address this issue. When I was here last, I talked about the mortality rate and why we're concerned. Right now, it's looking like it's about anywhere from 10 to 40 times more deadly than the flu. The challenge is that with the flu, because there's a vaccine, that cuts down on its transmission rate, so there are far fewer cases who can then go on to have severity illness or die. With COVID-19, we don't have that response, and so we have to approach it differently. And that's where the social distancing that we've all heard about in the past two weeks or three weeks comes into play. That's the only tool we have, really, to be able to slow the spread down. And what that means is that we really need to, you've heard the phrase probably, flatten the curve, too. What we're facing is that this is a virus that will affect anywhere from about 50% to 80% of the population. If that happens all at once, meaning over the course of a few months, our healthcare system will be overwhelmed by that. You see examples of that in the grocery store. When everybody goes there at once, there isn't anything there. In our hospitals, that's not a tenable situation. And so, all of the measures we're taking are really meant to slow this down. And by slowing it down, we can do two things. One, we are better able to respond to the healthcare needs that occur. We know that about 80% of people who get this will have mild symptoms that they can manage, but about 20% will have severe illness that they'll need significant medical care for. About 15% or so hospitalization, about 5% ICU care. And so, that's really what, that's really what we're looking to do, is spread that out so that we can handle that load that is going to come. And in spreading that out, we can do two things. One, we can better care for those with COVID. And we, two, we can better care for everybody else who's also needs, who also has acute needs, because all those other issues that go on in general are still going on now. And so, that's where the social distancing comes into play. And what we're seeing is that in order to put those, in order to get that kind of response from the public, we have to, we have to, as a government, consciously shut down our operations. And it's really challenging for any number of reasons. The economic impact on families and people, businesses, is not trivial, and it leads to a lot of consequences in terms of how are people going to pay rent, food, and we have to deal with those implications, how are businesses going to survive? And so, those are the trade-offs that we're facing versus if we don't move fast enough. And the reason that Maryland is moving that fast is because we see from other, other regions, whether it's in the United States or other countries, that those who don't move quickly face a huge spike, because there's about a two, one to two-week lag in what our tests are showing from when somebody actually got it. So, as, whatever you see now, and as of the last count that I have, we have 37 cases in Maryland, four of them in our county. Whatever that number is, it's much larger at this moment. We just haven't tested and/or gotten those results back yet. And so, even with all these measures right now, it's going to grow in the next week, next two weeks. What we're really looking to do is bend that curve down. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for, when do those numbers start to flatten out? That's the flatten the curve piece, piece of it. Limiting these events initially at 250, now at 50, closing down restaurants, closing down social spaces, closing down school, government functions. These are the kind of actions that have been shown to be effective in those other countries and counties that have, that have encountered this. That's why we are doing this here. And I will say that Governor Hogan's response has been really quite impressive in terms of its aggressiveness, recognizing that if we act now, we actually have a really much better chance of being able to get on top of it. And the coordination amongst counties, and frankly, in our county and county executive, has been really, really exceptional as well in terms of being really proactive. There are a number of actions that we're taking to help, to help people with this. This is the public messaging campaign around social distancing, not just what not to do, but what to do, how you can, how you can actually interact with others. That's the keeping your six feet apart, going to, going to large park spaces, public spaces, and that's why we dropped the fees for that. And I was there with the county executive when we had that conversation, phone, video. But the reality is that that's not, that's not enough. That's not how we normally operate. And so, that's the challenge that we're seeing in terms of how are people accommodating to this, how are people coping with this? As a health department, we are paying a lot of attention, actually, to the mental health and behavioral health issues. We just saw an increase in overdoses this past week, which is, which we believe is entirely correlated to what is happening. We've seen this, we see this spike in other, in other jurisdictions in the state last week as well. And so, there's, that's another one of the collaterals that we are paying attention to in terms of how are we managing this situation? The moves that we've taken, as I mentioned, we'll be tracking them, we'll be seeing when they flatten. And what we need to see is, we need to see those numbers start to go down for us to know that we've gotten traction on this situation. The question I get most often is, how long is this going to go on? The answer is, it's a data-based, it's a data-based question, as long as it takes to get those numbers to start to go down. And the numbers we're talking about is the numbers of new infections happening per day. So, I can't give you a fixed answer. I can tell you that we anticipate weeks, definitely, probably month, two, and I'm just basing that on data from other counties. We will see what ours has to show. And we're obviously very interconnected with our neighboring counties. So, it's not just our county, it's how is our area and our region doing? One of the questions that comes up is testing and what's going on with that. So, I figured I would try to answer that before you asked me about that. The testing issue is one of supply. The supply is not there at the national level. Every single jurisdiction in Maryland, every single state is trying to get their hands on tests. And there's three parts. There's the test, which is the swab, there's the media in which you put the swab in, and then there's the test reagents to run it. And I've had multiple conversations with the hospital, with BWMC and Anorundal Medical Center. None of them have enough tests for us to be able to, for us to be able to test more people. And right now, they have to reserve it for people who are hospitalized or otherwise seriously ill. And so, they have to essentially triage the supplies that they have. I've been working with the state to try to get more, but their supply, they don't, they don't have any more control over this than we do at this point. And so, that is, that is a challenge. We are working and coordinating with, with both the hospitals to have a consistent message about the fact that testing is only available for really high, high acuity patients at this point. And also, there will be some capacity for testing healthcare, healthcare workers broadly. So, both those direct service, public health, fire EMS, because of their close exposure to many people over time, the need to know what their status is if they're exposed is critical for our ability to control infection. I'm gonna, I mean, just going to note that we have, we have stood up a COVID health line at the health department to be able to answer questions and try to decompress off of the healthcare system. That's operational 15 hours a day on the weekdays, six hours a day on the weekends. We are getting, we got over 100 calls a day at the end of last week, and over 50 calls a day on the weekend. I don't know what our numbers are today, but they were hopping. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of just uncertainty about what people should do next. And a large part of that is because I've certainly never seen anything in 20 years that moves this fast, where guidelines change within three, four, five days. Guidelines take years to change. We're not used to, we're not used to the criteria changing every 48 to 72 hours. And so, that's created a lot of confusion, both within the healthcare system, frankly, within the public health system also, and for the public as well. So, I think that at this point, now that we're in community spread, where it's in our communities and it's spreading, we're sort of at our baseline, sort of at our end condition, which is pretty much if you have symptoms, it is possible that you have it. We're not going to test everybody because of the test limitations that I noted. But what we're recommending is that if you have mild symptoms, and so sore throat, cough, mild fever, that you can manage, that you stay home. Moving about to get tested isn't really going to change your outcome. And at this point, that moving about puts others at risk and also would use up scarce testing resources. But if you are having more severe symptoms, shortness of breath or persistent fever, we do recommend you get, you get seen preferably at the emergency room, as those are the main, that's, those are the main locations where testing is happening. But we encourage everybody to call the health department to work through that, work through that scenario. I could go on, I'm not going to, and I'm happy to answer your questions at this point.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think you hit the nail on the head with the uncertainty piece. The questions that I get from people are mostly centered around what's next, what do I do, that kind of thing. And I understand it's hard to predict the length of time, but do you anticipate making recommendations beyond what we already have in terms of the bars and the restaurants, you know, can be takeout only, things like that? Do you anticipate any further restrictions, or at least a recommendation for further restrictions on your part?
So, that's, so we may.
Okay.
Just to be, just to be frank, we may, and it depends on what we're seeing. The bars and the restaurants I know came down because after the actions that were taken at the end of last week, the social scene on the weekend wasn't one that was cutting down on, on transmission rates.
Sure.
And so, if these kind of changes have the effect that we need, then, okay.
I'm sort of thinking maybe other more essential, you know, gas stations, grocery stores, things like that. Do you anticipate that your recommendation would be to keep those open, or, because I think people are very nervous, they go to the grocery store because they're not sure whether next week they're going to be able to go.
We're going to keep them open, and we're actually, we're actually going to be pushing out guidance and assistance to those types of core services.
Okay.
As to how they can manage the, manage their volume in a way that decreases interaction and puts into place the social distancing.
Okay.
So, those need to stay open. How they stay open, we're going to be working with them.
My change. Okay, perfect. Thank you, that's helpful.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it a question of if we get to these 50% to 80% infection rates, or is that looking more and more inevitable at this point? The way it was presented, it sounds like it's almost, from a public health perspective, an inevitability that 50% to 80% of the population is going to be infected in some form or fashion. And I know you caveated that with the vast majority of people will be fine, there will be some percentage that's hospitalized, and then different levels there.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm just trying to understand the scope of what we're looking at.
Yeah, so, it is, it is likely that we are going to see 50% to 80% infected. What we are trying to do is spread that out over a long period of months.
Got it.
Instead of having it happen in the next few months, happen over, honestly, six to eight to 12 months, right? And we can handle it better if it happens that way.
Okay. And one of the things that I've heard a lot, Italy being one of the prime examples of this, is the concern that because this is a respiratory issue, the only relief that individuals who are afflicted with this and are hospitalized are seeing is when they're hooked to a ventilator, and that we have a unbelievably short supply of ventilators across the country. What does it look like here in the county?
So, I can't answer specifically in terms of the number of ventilators, but you're right that because it is respiratory disease, ventilators, and right now, we were in discussions this, today with Maryland Department of Health around two things. One, increasing hospital capacity and increasing the number of ventilators that are available.
Okay.
And that's being coordinated at the state level as to which hospitals, what capacity, what ventilators, because what we find is that it's going to be better to actually put more into one hospital so that it's not spread out, so you can create centers and isolate them. So, I don't know that conversation yet specifically as to how many beds, but that's something we're tracking.
Okay. And then, just assuming that we don't start seeing a bending of this curve, similar to what Councilwoman Hare was asking, I'm not, I don't want you to speculate because I don't want to create panic, but I'm also trying to understand what we're going to be able to do to sort of curb this even further.
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts on that? Anything that you're able to share? And if, and if you're not, I understand that, and I get the reasons for that. But I'm just trying to get where we go next, is the question, if, if we don't start to see a tapering off in the number of new infections.
Mm-hmm. That's very hard for me to say.
Okay.
Because that, that starts approaching the types of actions that are nearly unprecedented in this, in this state, county, country.
Everywhere. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pousky.
Dr. Rahm, I wanted to go over and speak particularly, because I actually went and visited my district to drive around, not to talk to too many people, be on the phone, just see what's happening. And a couple of things. So, for instance, the, the business and restaurant piece, as these roll out, do you have their email or contact information? How are they getting notification? Because a lot of people are watching a Facebook video with the governor making this announcement, but then looking for the Department of Health to give them clear guidance. So, when I go into a restaurant and I pick up, you know, an order to go, does that mean I can walk in and hang out for five minutes? I mean, so, is there additional guidance that's going to be coming out?
Yes. So, we are actually drafting that guidance tonight.
Appreciate it.
And that, that will go out tomorrow morning.
Okay. The other thing is, I've talked to a few police officers and the fire department. Now, again, I'm not trying to spread fear. There are supplies, but it's becoming worse because people have hoarded hand sanitizer, Lysol. I mean, I went to three grocery stores just to buy some food, and none of that stuff is there.
Mm-hmm.
But there are good people out there that are willing to support and donate, because we still arrest people and we still transport people to, you know, via ambulance, whatever else.
Mm-hmm.
So, I did reach out to the police chief and the fire chief, and just for public service numbers, the police said that 8311 Grover Road, Millersville is the warehouse that supplies could be dropped off there. And then, the fire chief said, just drop it off at the station. People go there because of the safe station program anyways, or other things, so you could ring the doorbell and just drop it off. Of course, I don't want to have this huge flood of people bring stuff in, but let's be real. The people that are dealing with this upfront, that get a call, are our first responders. Besides the cleaning products and other thing else, is there any other resources that the county is lacking that people could step up and donate?
Right now, what we're, what we predominantly need are masks, the masks that we're talking about, both the ear loops, the ones that go like this, and then the N95 masks and gowns. And it's unlikely, frankly, that people are going to have much of that. People may have masks, and we would really appreciate.
Understood. Well, you never know. I mean, we could be talking right now and somebody.
Yeah.
Who's, you know, retired doctor that just happens to have a box in his house. I mean, I, you know what I mean? You never know. That's why you put these things out there, to have it.
We would appreciate those masks tremendously.
The other one is, I know several people who work in the assisted living agencies, and they are offering resources. Obviously, they are not a hospital, but there are people either recovering from surgery or whatever else. So, if you're to triage patients from not sitting in a hospital, and they don't have the virus, but they have something else, and we could use these assisted living facilities, has there been discussion between Baltimore Washington Medical and Anorundal Medical to get those folks triage out when we look at the hospital system? Because certainly, when you're talking about beds, we can't open Crownsville Hospital. Not going to happen. I don't want to go there. But you get my point, that, you know, there are some things. So, I didn't know what conversations are occurring at the level, I know you're the Department of Health, but there has to be some inner, you know, coordination there. And if they're willing to step up, you know, private agencies that have these other facilities, is that something that, that we've had discussions on?
Yeah, those discussions are ongoing around how we can transfer people to lower acuity settings.
Okay.
And they're, they're active conversations right now.
Great. And then, the other one, again, I agree with my colleagues, it's so hard to speculate, you know, that you close everything. San Francisco has pretty much gone from just below what's called a lockdown, that, you know, you only go, but, one of the considerations, it's amazing what you read on Nextdoor and Facebook, of course, most of it is that they hate elected officials, but that's, that's a separate thing. But actually, people come up with a great idea that maybe seniors over a certain age, 50, are the only ones that go and can go to a pharmacy from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., that we coordinate with our CVS pharmacies and say, hey, you're the most vulnerable, they sanitize in the morning, we know, we talk to the stores, they sanitize, and they go in at a certain time, so we're not interacting with others. I, I thought it was a great idea. Again, I'm not a health expert, but if we're thinking about, you know, limiting people contact, and they need to get in the store because we're, you know, everybody needs their medication, whatever else, or the drive-throughs only for them at certain times, you know, those are the kind of things that we need to think about to get them the services that you need. So, again, I'm not going to send you everything, because there's some crazy ideas, but there are some good ideas that people come up with, and I thought that, hey, that's actually innovative and trying to make sure we care for the ones that are need and need, so.
So, please send those, because one of the things that we rely on is actually our, our health line to tell us what people are thinking and what the issues are that are cropping up. This is moving at a speed that is, that we just can't, without the feedback, we can't know what's going on in the community. So, I'd actually ask you to send those to us, and we'd be happy to consider them and work through them.
Absolutely. And I'm sure all my colleagues will say this, I know, just like me, things change by the minute, you know, when we're getting updates. So, I appreciate anything that you're doing. And again, I'm not trying to judge, because this is a bigger issue than politics. This is, it's a public health crisis. When you get it, we send the guidance. That's what we should be doing, is sending out, you know, clear factual information and to have it. And the more people that we could save or help, that's, that's what it's all about. So, again, I appreciate what your department's doing. The government itself, especially with the state, is trying to keep on top, like you said, with, to lower that curve. So, just thank you, and we'll keep at it. Appreciate it.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions that have come from constituents, and I'm not sure, I think some are for you and some will be for you, but I, and I don't think they're necessarily questions that arise from particular situations that are happening in the county, but concerns that arise because people have seen what's happening in other places. So, I'm, I've had questions about, you know, obviously, the Department of Aging and Disabilities has really taken some valuable steps to protect seniors, but the question has arisen about other communities, other, you know, the plus 55 communities, retirement communities, assisted living centers, and how the, you know, how our county health department has interacted with them, have we provided specific guidance or advice for them? And then, the second community that has generated concern is our detention centers. So, those are two questions that people have expressed specific concerns about in terms of, you know, the health aspects. I've had a lot of concerns about the economic aspects, but I'm guessing that's more in Mr. Powers' domain. So, if, if there's anything you can address about, you know, how that's going, you know, so I have information to share back, and it'll be on for TV for anyone who's watching tonight.
Yeah. So, you mentioned the detention centers. We've been working with them very closely over the past few weeks, and they have a, they have a really good process in place for how they manage isolation symptoms, who to call. So, we have that close working partnership, and I think that that's in a good place where anything can happen. In terms of the senior living centers that you mentioned, I had the conversation with aging last week. I'll be honest with you, I haven't checked up on that yet, so I can do that and let you know.
And the specific concern, not just about the senior centers that are, you know, managed by the county, but the other communities that are private, but, you know, have large numbers of 55-plus residents.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Viedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to thank you for the probable endless amounts of hours that you have been working. Your calm and steady, informative presentation is extremely helpful to guide myself and I'm sure my other colleagues. So, I have just a few questions. Following social media, people want to volunteer. They want to deliver food or help in any way that they can. Does that pose, does the level of volunteerism pose an additional problem when you have a lot of people coming out to help?
It is, it is a strange challenge at this time to be able to manage volunteers, because we're trying to limit interactions. And so, a lot of us are trying to work through what that would mean and what that looks like, because we're trying to minimize the number of people who are interacting. And so, just, just at a broad level, would rather have one person doing it for eight hours than four people doing it for two hours each, because that's more people getting exposed. So, we just, and we've had this conversation in terms of volunteers, also particularly the age breakdown of volunteers, they tend to skew older in general, and that's also a concern that we have to, we have to mind. So, a lot of folks are trying to work through what it would mean to look, what would mean to have volunteers in this kind of setting, and we haven't really figured that one out yet at this point.
Okay. And when you mentioned the guidelines or suggested guidelines that you'll be sending out, would that include daycares? Because I've hearing a lot of questions about daycares, and should it be limited to only essential personnel, or if parents do in fact have to go to a job, but all other children should stay home? Are we going to see that kind of detail?
So, there's been outreach to the daycare centers around what they need, what they need to do to try to minimize infection spread. The issue in terms of who can send their children to daycare at this point, we haven't really addressed that, mainly because most parents are not going to be able to afford to send their kids to work if they're not working, I'm sorry, to daycare if they're not working themselves. And with the general, we haven't heard that as a problem.
Okay.
So, we're, we're kind of just trying to address problems at this point, and anticipated problems.
Okay, just three more.
No, that's fine.
We, we know that, that it's transmitted through coughing, sneezing, but as far as surfaces, do we have detailed information? Because I know Clorox wipes are limited right now. What kind of surface time does the virus live?
So, generally, for plastic or metal, it can, it typically lasts up to 24 hours, but can last up to three days, which is why we recommend frequent, I'm sorry, cleaning of frequently touched surfaces. For cloth, for cloth, rugs, clothes, that kind of thing, it's typically less than a day. It doesn't last more than that.
Okay.
And that's actually a part of some of our guidance around material handling, is to minimize the use of disinfectants. You can actually let it sit for an amount of time, depending on the material, to naturally disinfect.
Okay. And then, there's been some chatter about Ibuprofen versus acetaminophen, warm water over cold water. Are we going to kind of create, I don't want to, like a Snopes, where you can identify the misinformation on treating at home that is out there? Because I don't know if, if that is a factual.
We're happy to, that's the kind of thing that helps us, because it's good to know that. So, we'd be happy to put that up and push that out as to what is effective treatment for this. treatment for this.
That would be wonderful. And then finally, and I don't know if you can share this information, do we have a significant amount of test results pending? And can you share those numbers?
No.
Okay. I assume so, but thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I think my colleagues covered any of my questions. I would like to echo their sentiments about your tireless effort. So thank you very, very much. Mr. Power.
I'm the chair, members of the council. I'm Matt Power with the County Executive's Office. I'm happy to be here. I wanted to provide you with a quick sort of operational update on some of the things that we've been working on. Like all of you, it's nearly impossible for me to remember what life was like a week ago today. It's been a whirlwind for everyone in the administration and all the good county employees that have been working hard to try and address this crisis. Everything has been evolving. We've been doing our best to keep the citizens and the council informed. I've been incredibly impressed with the dedication, the professionalism, the collaboration, and just literally the raw number of hours that people have been putting in over the last week to make sure that we can respond as fast and effectively as we can. Beginning last Thursday, we started posting the actions of county government and established a centralized protocol to handle and publicize cancellations of meetings. And we greatly appreciate the assistance that you've given us to help promote the site. And we ask for your continued help in making sure that citizens can be directed to that site. I don't want to cover all the actions we've taken, but there are a few that I would like to highlight and make you aware of. All of those we've taken in the context of protecting public health, protecting our most vulnerable populations, and maintaining the core services of county government. In the last five days, the administration has closed senior centers and libraries, which was a tough but necessary thing to do. We closed nutrition sites, but are starting home distribution beginning this week. We've moved to appointment-only meetings for career centers and permits. We have suspended all water shut-offs indefinitely in the county. Mobile crisis is utilizing phone consultations whenever possible to allow social distancing. We held a virtual town hall to discuss COVID-19 and provide citizens information as well as hear directly from them. As a result of the virtual town hall, we waived county park entrance fees until further notice because one of the comments we noticed from social media was one of the citizens saying, I'd love to go to the parks in Recs. I'd love to bring my kids there, but I'm an hourly worker and I've just lost my job. Can you waive the fees at Rec and Parks? And by the time the meeting was over, we said, that is the right thing to do. We want people to have an opportunity to go outside with their kids. This is one of the few things that people can do safely and provide that social distancing that we need and still continue to enjoy the amenities in the county and the life that they want with their family. Today, we waived transit fees for our transit system to make sure that no one is in lurches as they're losing their paychecks and can get around the county. Economic development has waived late fees for businesses with loans as of today. The county executive signed the executive order you have before you tonight in order to suspend legal and procedural deadlines and help cut through red tape so that we can respond to this crisis as efficiently as possible. We've implemented a new telework policy to maximize the use of teleworking among the county workforce and have also provided more flexibility for our department heads to grant administrative leave to employees so that we can do everything we can to help keep them whole as this crisis moves forward. That said, we have a lot more work to do. The governor's announcement today was absolutely the right one, and we applaud him for leading the way that he has. It will also have real impacts on employers, employees, and the families in the county. And we're going to be working at the local level to try and help soften those negative impacts. There are a number of efforts that are still underway or that have had to pivot as a result of the changes that we've been getting and notifications on a daily, if not hourly, basis. As you know, one of the governor's executive orders directed the state superintendent to work on providing childcare for healthcare workers and first responders. We established an internal working group, and we're in touch with AACPS in order to utilize existing school space and the aftercare staff from Rec and Parks who are in the schools on a daily basis when schools are functioning to begin providing that service. We found out late this afternoon that the state superintendent has determined that schools can't host childcare at this time. So we're now examining our senior centers and our libraries as alternate locations and establishing a new team to figure out where to put those up and how to make the determinations as to verifying that people are healthcare workers or that people are in public safety and first responders so that we can start that service for them as soon as we possibly can. We've had numerous requests about the county's three malls, and the EDC has reached out to them, and we're continuing to assess that situation. We are working to set up donation centers for citizens. In fact, Councilman Pruski, that came as a result of you putting it on our radar. The warehouse is, at Global Road, is a place to be able to start dropping them off. But we also have other plans in place in our ESFs to have the offices of emergency management, as well as Rec and Parks who play a role, as well as public safety, to try and centralize those donations so that we aren't impacting the ability of our first responders to do their primary jobs. We have another virtual hall this Saturday, and we greatly appreciate your help in promoting that. It was a great way for us to get information out to our citizens and a great way for us to get feedback from them on the things that they're concerned about, the things that they're worried about. I think we probably dispatched dozens and dozens and dozens of questions to the Department of Health that they have been dispatching within their department and getting answers back to the citizens who responded during the town hall. So we greatly appreciate your assistance and the collaboration that you've provided for us. We want to continue to be here for you, keep you updated, and make sure that we're responding to the needs within each of your districts. With that said, I'm happy to take any questions as to sort of the operations and how we're trying to respond to a very evolving and fast-moving crisis.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Mr. Power. So one of the things that I've tried to keep up on is what other counties and states have been doing. And I don't know if you have the answer to this question, but one of the concerns was the meals for students and the reallocation of resources. I don't know if the school system has enough staff. Obviously, I've seen the announcement, but they've taken some county employees that have other jobs to assist with that.
Yes.
I don't know if you have anything to respond to that. They're all set with resources?
I believe there are 52 sites currently up and running. One of the other great things we've been able to do is sort of pool resources and staff so that if there are situations where their current work is not such that they're going to be able to continue it, that we can utilize them in other ways. And so that's certainly something that we continue to do and again, work on in multiple things as well as not only meals, but so many other services we're trying to provide.
Absolutely. And then the other thing, I know certainly people think about housing and paying the rent, whatever else. But one of the things when you have hourly employees, particularly people in the restaurant business, they need to eat. And what was great, particularly in my district, is a lot of restaurant owners, if they can't necessarily pay maybe a quarter of their wage, are giving them food, which is great. But I did want to talk to you because I've seen a lot of, like, we have the Arundel cupboard, which is to support students at a high school. We have several other agencies. Has the food bank put out any guidance about where donations should go? Because again, I think that may be something, if we go to further closures and further economic delay, that there's some coordinated or organized effort. Again, we have those resources, but I don't know. It's almost like the donation piece. You don't want to tell, hey, everybody drop it off here, you know? But that might be something to consider is that we have these institutions set up, you know, I don't want to use Sarah's House as an example, but, you know, there's particular agencies in each of our districts, whether it's religious or nonprofit. But maybe that's something that could be discussed, that if somebody is looking for assistance, you should turn there. Because it's great as a neighbor to offer something, but some people sometimes feel more comfortable with an agency or something that they're of. So I don't know if that's something, a press release or something that could be put out, hey, we're coordinating any food, or if people want to give a monetary donation through the food bank. But just a thought.
Yeah, our nonprofit partners have been phenomenal and working very closely with all of county government. But your point is very well taken, and we can do more to publicize both the good work they're doing and the opportunities for them to come and help support the work that we're trying to get done.
Thank you again.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Has there been any discussion of doing what some other jurisdictions have done as far as either buying or contracting for space in, you know, say, an entire hotel or a motel or something to help people be quarantined effectively?
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion between the counties about that. We are currently looking at potential warehouse space and other possibilities that might be possibilities for us should things continue on the path that it looks like it is. I know a number, the city is looking at hotels. Prince George's County is currently looking into lease space. And we, our central services is also similarly looking for what would be appropriate space if we got to that stage.
Okay. And we're looking at warehouses?
They're looking at multiple options, things that are big enough to meet it. We don't have, we don't own a hotel like Baltimore City does to provide those kinds of services. But we're looking at all kinds of square footage, and we'll be working with the health department before we actually let sort of anything out to make sure that we're getting the appropriate space.
Okay. And would I be right in thinking that probably you'd have to come back before us to tell us about what you wanted to do with that purchase or contract? I mean, given, I just imagine it's a high-dollar thing.
Yes, I would presume so. But I would defer to the Office of Law and the exact thresholds. And I'm not sure yet what we are actually looking at. We've not identified anything. We began that process literally four hours ago.
Okay. Well, hey, keep talking. Thanks. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Power, I want to ask you, do you know the balance currently in the CAO's contingency fund? Because I'm assuming if some of these things come out, that might be one of the first places that we're looking, so.
Agreed. And I know that the CAO is looking at that and monitoring it, but I do not have the balance off the top of my head. But we can certainly get to that.
Mr. Trumpbauer is coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. I can't give you an exact amount either. I can tell you because there, to date, has been very little snow removal required.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
There is, there is funding in the CAO contingency fund. And I know the county administrative officer has been working with Mr. Power and our agency staff to decide how and when that could be deployed. And I'll also say that the county executive has expressed a priority to, if we have to expend money like that, it should go to the folks that might need it most, those among us who are vulnerable. So he has expressed that pretty explicitly. But we will follow up with you probably tomorrow and get you a current accounting of that.
Perfect. Thank you. Also wanted to ask you, and you may or may not know this, this may be a Mr. Swain question for Office of Law, but, and also maybe getting a little ahead, so I'm going to telegraph where I'm going. We're going to get a resolution this evening that's going to deal with emergency authors or emergency powers of the county executive. I guess I was just curious, from the things that have happened so far, what has happened that falls under those emergency powers? And what, if anything, would the county executive be considering that's beyond that to really sort of stem this? Because in reviewing those emergency powers, I'll be honest with you, they seem a little antiquated. I mean, the idea of like shutting down liquor stores, you know, stopping sales of firearm and ammunition, blocking certain parking, they seem more related to sort of riot-type scenarios as opposed to public health scenarios like what we're talking about. So I guess I just want to understand what it is that you're able to do and what it is that you all are thinking of doing that that authorization gives you. So you don't necessarily have to have an answer now, but I'm just giving you a sense that I'll ask that Friday, I'm sure, again.
Sure. That's more than fair, and I think that's a half-and-half question. But I can't tell you just on certain things, being able to extend deadlines and be able to extend permit deadlines and some practical things so that we can make sure that people are held harmless as a result of sort of things being slowed down or maybe not being able to go in. We're doing appointments only for permits. So we want to make sure that people are held harmless and aren't caught up in the middle of the process simply because we're off by a day or two. That was one of the primary goals that we had. But we'll certainly be ready for you on Friday.
Thank you.
Additional information.
The last question I was going to ask you is about paid leave. So I know the county obviously has instituted, it looked like a telework policy, I think that came out today.
Yes, sir.
But to the extent that we are seeing scenarios where folks are not able to work, who are hourly employees for the county, what are we looking at in terms of sort of paid sick leave if they don't have any left? What does that look like? I received an email that I think my colleagues got too, from someone with the home hospital online education unit of the public schools, who indicated that the superintendent has noted that they will not be being paid while they're not able to work. So I'm just concerned about these types of workers because I know in the private sector, I already know of businesses that have had to lay people off or let them go or ask them to work for less money or certain things because the money's not coming in. But I'm concerned about that for hourly workers for the county, too. So what, if anything, is going on with that?
Sure. That's a great question. I can't answer on behalf of the Board of Ed or the superintendent, obviously.
Understood, yep.
But I can certainly say that our intention is to both offer opportunities to work for hourly workers by sharing resources among departments and giving them chances to work. And in instances where through no harm of their own, they don't have a workplace to report to, our intention is to continue to provide them administrative leave so that they are kept hold during this crisis and they're not without a paycheck at home with their family when they're willing to come to work. And the only reason they can is because there's a pandemic going through the county and we can't give them a workplace.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues. You addressed some of the questions that I also had. This may be a question for Mr. Swain. I've heard also from a number of my constituents who work for the school system as hourly employees, such as bus drivers, TAs, cafeteria workers, as Councilman Volkey mentioned, the home hospital teachers. And I'm concerned because I'm hearing that a number of those groups, now, some of those may be, you know, if you're a bus driver, you might be actually technically working for a contractor. But I'm wondering, is there a reason we can't make sure that that administrative leave or, you know, some sort of paid leave is available to those workers as well? Because I feel like, you know, we've already budgeted for those expenses, and we don't want to leave those people sort of hanging. So that's, I don't know if that's a question for the Office of Law. Can we, is there a way we can direct to ensure that those funds are spent as they were allocated? Or is there any place for us to do that?
I think it would be more a question for the Board of Ed and the county superintendent as it relates to some of those employees.
Thank you. And Chris Trumpaugh with the County Exec's Office. Again, I will say, from the county administration's perspective, we're doing everything we can to help those employees that are under the county's control. For the Board of Ed, it's been my experience, we've never had a problem getting them to spend the money before.
[laughing]
But I think in this particular instance, I don't want to overstep our bounds because they do control their funding once it gets over there. But the guidance that we have consistently given our agency directors is just what you heard from Mr. Power, that for our, you know, Rec and Parks, temporary seasonal workers, for our Department of Health, temporary inspectors and all of those, we're giving our agency directors guidance to, if those folks can't come to work, find a way to get them on administrative leave or take care of them. Because if we have large numbers of our constituency not able to pay their rent or buy food, that's not helping anybody. And as you said, these expenses are already budgeted. So I think for the Board of Ed questions and the contractual workers under the board, we'd have to get an answer from them.
Okay, all right.
Rather than speaking on their behalf.
I greatly appreciate that. One last question I have goes to small business owners. My understanding is that in order to access the small business, the SBA funds, we have to have a certain declaration from the governor. Just, has the county, has the county made any, you know, asked the governor to make such a declaration? Are we putting pressure? Is there anything we can do to encourage the governor? So, you know, employers, small business employers that, you know, may be at risk of going out of business, laying off employees and such, have the resources they need to, you know, to sort of ride out this crisis?
So in my conversations with the EDC today, they indicated that we need to have five businesses show the economic impact and the detriment to them. They are working on that now currently. That will go to Commerce, which will then go to the federal Small Business Administration. So I don't believe that we need a governor's declaration for that component. The difficulty being, though, at the current time, there's about $20 million in the Small Business Administration at the federal level for that. So that obviously is, you know, that's not going to go too far nationwide, given how many businesses are being impacted. The hope is that there will be additional funding provided in that or that the state can also provide additional funding for some of our small businesses. And we're trying to work now with Commerce to determine what that might look like.
Okay, thank you. And again, the contingency fund, I hope we're looking at that and whatnot. I guess we're lucky, maybe, that we didn't have a snowy winter. And I'll just, you know, finish by saying thank you to everybody in this room because I know everyone in this room is just working their tails off to do everything they can to serve the citizens of our county. So thank you for looking out for everyone's best interest.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. And I understand budget is not here, but do we have any preliminary numbers on our projected revenue and the impacts and how they're trending?
Mr. Trumpbauer. Councilwoman Fiedler, if you'll just hold that thought for a bit, that's going to be part of my comments.
Oh, then I will wait.
So I'm going to speak generally about the budget after Mr. Power is done with his government operations update.
Then I am done. I only have budget questions.
[laughing] I don't have any more questions. I would say some of the uncertainty around these issues come from not knowing if we're going to be out of school for longer and if we're going to have to make up those days into the summer. So paying contractual workers while we have appropriated funds for those nine-month employees, the concern may be, I haven't spoken to the superintendent or the Board of Ed, that without knowing if they're going to have, need those contract workers into the summer, that will eat into their budget. So it's all fluid and up in the air right now. But I have received the same emails and spoke to a home health teacher, actually, this weekend personally. And it was very concerning to me. So these are all good, good questions. Mr. Trumpbauer, you wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did just want to have two quick things to say. Firstly, on the county budget, as you guys know, today is March 16th. In about a month and a half, we are required by the charter to bring a proposed budget down to you. In January, the county executive and myself met with each and every one of you, and we talked about what you wanted in the budget, and we talked about what we were thinking about the budget. Well, this is a whole new world. So I want to tell you guys that today was the very first departmental meeting we had on our operating budget with several of our agencies. And the amount of uncertainty that is out there right now is extraordinary. So I'm asking you to please bear with us. We don't know what the budget situation is going to look like, and we have about 45 days to figure it out. So it's very likely that we will be putting off some preliminary decisions. So it's very likely that we will be putting off some preliminary decisions on the budget later than usual to try and get some more clarity on what the revenue picture is going to look like and how long this pandemic may be affecting our county. So that is my general plea to you, to give us a little bit of space if you can. We are trying to sort out the same things that you guys are worried about. And I want to segue that into the second thing I wanted to say, which is, the administration is doing the best we can, and we're making mistakes. We're going to continue to make mistakes, and this is new territory for everybody. So I know that you guys are leaders in your communities, and you can help very much by helping to push out the information that Dr. Callian Araman has said. You can, you can take, send people to the aacounty.org/coronavirus site. That's where our resources are. It tells you all the county actions that we're taking day by day. It has all the executive orders listed there, the press releases and everything else. That's where we're directing people to get their accurate information as this county seeks to do the best we can against this pandemic. But if you have specific questions about the budget, I am not a budgeteer, but I will do my best to give you some semblance of where we are right now. But my general message is, there is an overwhelming amount of uncertainty, and we are trying to take things very, very conservatively headed into May 1st. So you can probably read between the lines there, but this is a much different situation than we may have thought we were in three weeks or a month ago. I preemptively answered your question. Fantastic. Well, then, let me just say, from the administration's standpoint, thank you. This is very hard on our staff, our agency directors, and the county employees because we're all struggling with how to best serve the residents and the businesses of this county during these unusual times. I know it's hard on you, and you're getting constituent calls and questions that you don't know the answer to. So I want to take a minute to prop up Matt Power, who's our lead on the government side on this, on the administration side. And I'll encourage you to work with him or reach out to me directly. We're going to do our best to continue to put out information, not only to you all and our agency directors, but to the public at large, the best we can because we feel like that's the best that we can do under these circumstances and try, is try and share accurate information and what the county is doing. So thank you all for what you're doing as well.
Thank you very much. We're going to move forward. I see no other questions from my colleagues. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here.
Thank you.
We are unable to have the general public in attendance tonight. As a result, we cannot invite people to address the council on any general topic or offer public testimony on any bill this evening. May I have a motion to suspend Rule 3-105 and Rule 4-104 for this particular occasion?
So moved.
Second?
Madam Secretary.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule Number 3-105 and Rule Number 4-104 for this occasion is passed.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I would like to withdraw Bill 1520.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 2nd, 2020.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Lacy asked for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2420, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning General Provisions Civil Emergencies for the Purpose of Extending the Proclamation of Civil Emergency by the County Executive Through April 4, 2020, or the Date the Civil Emergency Proclamation for the State of Maryland Is Approved to be Renewed, Extended, or Terminated, or Terminated by the Governor of Maryland or the Maryland General Assembly, and Making This Ordinance an Emergency Measure.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We have no resolutions.
Thank you. May I have a motion to postpone the public hearings on Bill Numbers 220 as amended, 8-20, 9-20, 10-20, 11-20, 12-20, 13-20, and 14-20, until a date still to be determined?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Mr. Swain, I think I'm going to need you for this question. Just want to be clear that on these bills, the time in terms of the expiration from their moment of introduction until the time that they typically would expire, has that been suspended by way of the actions of the county executive?
I'm Greg Swain, the county attorney. The county executive's executive order number 17, which was signed today, suspends the running of all those time limits until 30 days after the emergency declaration is terminated or expires. So that holds the running of any time limits and would recommence 30 days after the emergency declaration is terminated. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?